All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Welcome to our joint committee hearing between the Economic Development Committee here at the group of the City Council, as well as the Greenfield Planning Board. I'd like to open the meeting at this time, the time is 6:01 PM. And we will do a roll call. Councillor Ricketts.
Present.
Councillor Dolan. Councillor Typhrom.
Here.
And Councillor Burson.
Here.
Alright, great.
And I'm... I'm Linda Smith, and I'm Chairman of the Greenfield Planning Board. And we also have a quorum, and so I will take the role to open the public hearing for the Planning Board. Ginny Disorder.
Here.
Charles Roberts.
Here.
Jamie Potter.
Here.
George Thompsons.
Here.
Jim Allen is not here yet, anyway, and Amy Lippman.
Here.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge that Mayor Baran is here with us today. President Reno is also joining us, as well as Councillor's son, who is in the audience.
Okay. I need to make the Chair's statement. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the Chairperson at this time. Chris Collins from the recorder is here recording. Anyone else?
GCTV, Greenfield Community Television.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do need to make an announcement about the Planning Board deliberation. Yesterday afternoon, it was discovered that there was a mistake in the posting for this evening's meeting. The Planning Board was only technically posted for the public hearing. And so, we will have to have the Planning Board deliberation on Monday, March 18th, at 7 o'clock, at the John Son Center. I really am so sorry, it was discovered by Kathy yesterday, late afternoon. And so, we had no time to put up, posting up for the meeting part of our deliber- of this evening. But you are welcome to come for the deliberation on Monday, starting at 7 o'clock, at the John Son Center. So I am going to start this meeting with the ground rules. As we begin the public hearing tonight, I first of all want to thank all who have sent us written comments. Eric Torak, Director of Planning, has forwarded those comments on to all the Planning Board members, and we have all had a chance to read and consider them. He has a listing of the comments received, and that list is at the Planning Department office, should anyone wish to see it. A few ground rules prior to opening this up. This hearing is scheduled to end at 9 o'clock. Councillor Stempel and I have agreed that each speaker is allowed two minutes to speak, assuring that as many speakers as possible are able to voice their position within that timeframe. The timekeeper will enact, will, actually Kathy Scott will be keeping track of the time, speaking time. And everyone will get two minutes, and there will be a little buzzer that sounds, and a light flashing, when your two minutes is up. I do insist, let's see, residents of Greenfield will be given priority over non-residents as to the speaking order. I do insist that those in the audience refrain from applauding or vocalizing agreement or disagreement during or after a speaker's allotted time. This will only cause, you know, more time to be lost to the actual speakers. A public hearing is a most important part of our local political process. Every voice is valuable to this process, and I expect that we will be courteous and respectful of everyone in the room. My personal hope is that in addition to being respectful of each other, we will truly listen to each other, in order to better understand what each speaker is choosing to share. We are all neighbors here, in this room. There has been a police officer assigned to this public hearing tonight, and he isn't attending. She, I can't see that far, she is in attendance tonight. And I have to say, in all my years as Chair of chairing hearings at both School Committee and Planning Board, I have never had to ask assistance from an officer. If there is any disrespect or disruption, I will indeed call for it, but I certainly don't expect that that would be necessary. I will call individuals to the microphone in the order that they are signed in. And then, and at the same time, I will announce the next speaker as well, so they can approach the microphone and be ready to speak, as soon as the other person is finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Smith. At this moment, at, I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:09 PM. And I will read the notice. The Greenfield Town Council Economic Development Committee and Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, beginning at 6:00 PM and ending at 9:00 PM at the Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue, Greenfield, Massachusetts, to consider the following proposed amendments to the Greenfield zoning ordinance. By mending 200-dash-four... 16 corridor overlay district CO, by striking A1 in its entirety and replacing with 1. French King Highway High Street corridor overlay district shall apply to the following roadway corridors. 1. Land extending from intersection of Clark Street and High Street along High Street South to Smith Street. And 2. The land east of the French King Highway and north of Canada Hill Road to the junction of French King Highway and Road 2. 200-dash-7-dot-12, major development review by, in Section B1, replacing 1,000 with 3,000, and replacing 500 with 1,000 to 500. And in Section B4, replacing 100,000 with 150,000, and 15,000 with 35,000, and 40,000 with 75,000. And deleting Section B5 in its entirety. And in Section C, striking 1 and 2 in their entirety and replacing with 1. The SPGA shall be the Zoning Board of Appeals, and in Section E, striking adversely impacted and replace with create a materially adverse impact on. And in Section F, I mean prior to the words upon the review of the project, the following language. Notwithstanding the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, all set, excuse me, all decisions of the SPGA shall be made within 210 days from the initial date of application. The failure to issue a decision within 210 days shall result in the granting of a special permit as presented, and a constructive grant shall be issued in result in the granting of the special permit as presented in a constructive, oops, accordance with the provisions of, I'm going to repeat that sentence. The failure to issue a decision within 210 days shall result in the granting of a special permit as presented, and constructive grant shall be issued in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law 40A. The provisions of this regulation shall be severable. Should any section or provision of this regulation be held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, this shall not affect the validity or enforceability of any other section or provision of this regulation. And this regulation, exclusive of the invalid or unenforceable section or provision, shall to the full extent be consistent with law, full extent consistent with law, remain in full of for, full force and effect. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code. And further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it follow the numbering format of the code of the town of Greenfield. Amend the zoning map incorporated into the Greenfield zoning ordinance by Section 200-3-dot-2, changing the underlying district of the corridor overlay district defined in Section 200-4-dot-16A of this ordinance from general commercial, general industry. The Town Council may consider this same on Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School, 21 Bar Avenue, Greenfield, Massachusetts, 01301. Materials can be obtained from the Town Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Or at the Department of Planning and Development at 20 Sanderson Street, Room 203, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, at 413-772-1549. Respectfully submitted, Ashley Sefol, Economic Development Committee Chairperson. And Linda Smith, Planning Board Chairperson. Okay, so that's a bit of a mouthful. And so, with that being opened, we would like to welcome our first speaker to the podium.
Joan Milnes.
Ms. Mills.
Mills.
Yeah.
And this next speaker is David Brumal. And I apologize if I get this here too.
Can you hear me alright? Okay.
And give you, and just one more request, when you come up, we have your name up here, but just speak your name and your address for the record.
Okay, sure. Hi, I'm Joan Mills, I live in Greenfield at 42 Silvercrest Lane. I am here tonight to tell you one story and one joke. Before I get to them, I want to say that I did not have time or materials to make a sign for this meeting. But if I had, my sign would say, "Greenfield is a retail desert. It does not serve the shopping needs of its community." Now for the story. On February 21st, our trusty Mr. Coffee drip coffee maker stopped working. My husband and I wanted to replace it with a similar machine, and we know that they are available at our preferred price of around $30, at stores like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and Target, and Walmart. However, we wanted to shop local, so we tried that first. Wilson's had a wide selection of high-end coffee makers, starting at $85, but no Mr. Coffee type machines. One of the dollar stores in Greenfield had a low-cost version of Mr. Coffee, but the quality matched the price. Feeling discouraged and not wanting to waste any more time hunting around Greenfield, we headed to Walmart in North Hampton. They had a good selection of what we wanted, and we bought one for $19.77. While we were there, we purchased two other items, which are not available in Greenfield. Now for the joke, which is so true, I will not be surprised if no one laughs. Here we go. For $100 at Market Basket, you can completely fill a shopping cart. For $100 at Stop &amp; Shop, you can half-fill that same shopping cart. For $100 at Big Y, you can fill a handbasket. Thank you for listening. As you can tell, I am in favor of the zoning changes proposed by Councillors Reno and Mast, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, David. And Joan...
Graffline is after, after David Brumal.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this chance to talk. I'm David Brumal, I'm the Chairman of the Nola Beaker Project. And as you know, we're the largest landowner in the French King zone. First and foremost, the Board wants to say that we fully support our friends and neighbors in their effort to build a new library. And therefore, it's kind of with mixed feelings that we will remain largely acquiescent in the planned rezoning of the French King neighborhood. We're the largest landowners in that zone, and it's undeniable, and that we feel rather coerced into not challenging the plan, given the either-or situation of the library or the zoning change. In a lot, in a lot of ways, I would say the rezoning doesn't affect the property of Wissatinoa directly. We, our 40.2 acres is already unconditionally protected in perpetuity by a conservation restriction held by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Therefore, we are not necessarily endangered by the rezoning, although what goes on outside of our property limits, of course, will greatly affect our sense of place. In fact, we have our iron, our long-term challenges focusing on our cemetery and burial grounds on the proposed big box site. We'll talk a lot more about that in the future, I'm sure. Some of you may well be aware of the hundreds of Native American remains found on that site. Our aim is to protect those graves of hundreds of human beings that are buried there. We've given the City Plan, the Planning Board the information, history, and legal documentation supporting our position, which is also held by our federally recognized tribal partners. We expect that the documents and more that will be coming, that contain promises of protection of our grave sites, will be honored. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joe Graffline, and following him, will be Garrett Connolly.
My name's Joe Grafflin. I want to blow out the speakers. 67 Route 10 West, Northfield. My unique position in this conversation is, is the tribal partnership and liaison relationship that I have with the four federally recognized tribes. I was also involved with the Department of the Army, the Army Corps of Engineers, the last go-round. Spent a lot of time out on the east end of this proposed rezoning area, walking the grounds with our Corps of Engineers. A great deal has happened since the last time that the, that a permit was issued, or preliminary permit was issued for the area, at least on the east end of the French King Highway here. In 2009, the Department of the Interior made a determination of eligibility for everything within a 20-mile radius of the Turners Falls Air Force, as being eligible for inclusion into the National Register of Historic Places in reference to any ceremonial stone landscapes that exist in the area. And in case you haven't heard the story of the giant sleeping beaver, which is a 10,000-year-old oral tradition from the tribal people, and a sacred piece of land to them, that is considered a sacred ceremonial stone landscape for them. So the whole ridge, we are experiencing in this area, the tail of the sleeping beaver, which starts at Mount Sugarloaf where the head is, the beaver is facing north. That falls into that particular protective acknowledgement by the Department of the Interior. One of the things I do know about the Army Corps of Engineers is that anything that happens from this point forward, they're going to have to be back out here. This is going to be a very complicated and dense process. And I'll tell you a quick story from my ground school training when I was in the process of getting my pilot's license. I spent time in that class with an individual who, who I thought would make a pretty good pilot. He ended up getting a sophisticated aircraft moving.
My time's up.
My time's up. I'm very much want to say I'm in favor of a, of a library, and it's an investment in the next seven generations. Thank you.
That's what I was told.
Garrett Connolly, I'm Garrett Connolly, 84 Congress Street, Greenfield. I brought a ballot which I'm putting on the web. I've been developing, as democracy collapses in the United States, I've been working on developing a more modern democracy. And so, I'm offering to the people over the internet, the ability to vote on this issue. And the choices they have are like this. 1. Extend Greenfield Strip Mall downtown design northward. Rezone new strip for Town Council, new library votes. Burgers and big boxes are hused. 2. Move fire station to freeway traffic circle. Add new town freeway access economy. 3. Clear away empty unsightly downtown buildings. Replace old buildings with community gardens. Change name of Main Street to Garden Street. Vote out Town Council promoting new strip mall zoning as compromise exchange for library votes. 5. Remodel existing library with pledged trial running. Upgrade handicap access and stolen D. humidifier. Extend upper story at back. 6. Convert fire station to youth recreation center. 7. Vote on public library citizen redesign contest. These can all be arranged on a new ballot that I've put on the internet at democracyautonomousdemocracy.org. It is around the world now, there's three ballots only on it, it's brand new. One for the President of the United States, one for Greenfield, and one for the Pacific States, who may wish to withdraw from the war aspect of the whole United States at large. So this is the ballot that's on autonomousdemocracy.org. And I encourage you to try it, it's pretty fun. It's like a computer game, and it's going to grow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. John Widnarski is the next speaker, and Amy Clark follows John.
John M. Widnarski, my name's on there.
John Widnarski, is he here?
Must be me, I didn't know I had signed up. I signed up here, I don't remember signing there. Franklin Street.
Franklin Street, yes.
Is that me?
This is the saying. Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, unscripted, so forgive me if my words are not formulated. My comments are that, you know, I have no research to back this up, I'm just going by my gut. I don't see personally retail growing, big boxes growing. It seems like they're contracting in the era, era, aura of e-commerce. So, my feeling is that relaxing the zoning in this area is not fraught with peril for a Walmart. That's my own feeling. But I do see that a library would help, so I am here in support of the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Clark, and David...
Detle.
Detle.
Amy Clark, from 39 Madison Circle in Greenfield. Thank you all for holding this hearing. I believe that whatever your views, you are trying to do what you believe is best for our town, and doing it within a very condensed timeframe. I've heard a lot about how vibrant growth is over in Athol, so I'd like to take a look. It's absolutely true that Athol now has the North Quabon Commons, including Market Basket, Marshalls, Hobby Lobby, Starbucks, Taco Bell, a cinema, and roaring works, including a hotel, much as we have on the trail. While our second commercial district is linked to Main Street, what Athol has done is create a totally new Main Street, a mile or more out of town and without a single local business. It's clear there's no intent to attract folks to the downtown Main Street, which is as empty and sorry-looking as it has ever been. Online, I read that the current Market Basket site in Athol entails 71 acres. Altogether, they have a total of over 200 acres to develop. The Suruzy site we have along the French King has 18 acres, with a few more 1-2 acre parcels along the highway. So even if you think creating a third commercial district for our town is a good idea that wouldn't devastate our downtown, if what you are envisioning is an Athol-like development, we simply do not have that kind of land. We have room for a store, a gas station, or a fast food restaurant. When I Googled best restaurants in Athol, the first to come up was the new 110 Grill at the Market Basket site. When I Google best restaurants in Greenfield, I want to continue to see Hope &amp; Olive, The People's Pike, Magpie, Village Pizza, Mesa Verde, and Brad's. I would like to suggest, as I did to Town Council two years ago, that you have the fate of our downtown in your hands, and I would urge you to dream bigger dreams for our town than gas stations and fast food restaurants. Please support Councillor Stapp's proposal to bring living wage jobs and additional revenue to Greenfield by rezoning the French King to general use. And Doug and I strongly urge the Council to vote yes for the library.
Thank you. David?
And Nathaniel Hussey is the next speaker.
Well, thank you very much for allowing outsiders to speak. I'm coming from Montague, where our grocery store, which has been marginally profitable for many years, has just by executive fiat become worker-owned. So they are going to inherit the dubious prospect of competing with whatever development you are about to allow on Route 2 and French King. If we lose our grocery store in Turners, where very few people own cars, in my neck of the woods, my, my part of town, you're going to see a trail of people pushing shopping carts up Canada Hill. And we hate, we hate to think of that. I also hate to think of Foster's, or Wilson's, or Baker's, or any of the other legacy anchor stores that still maintain a toehold here in Greenfield, the county seat, suffering from the likes of the chain stores that Athol has just welcomed in. I don't like driving into Greenfield and waiting at Federal and Main. That's the worst stoplight in the county. So I plan my trips to Greenfield carefully. And I think a lot of people will think twice if they have easy and convenient shopping on Route 2 from the other 25 towns in the county, before they ever visit downtown Greenfield again if you pass this ridiculous proposal, which is really just blackmail to people who do support, for very good reasons, a wheelchair-accessible library. I also hate to see the beautiful Asher Benjamin Building. You've already hidden one behind the strip mall on Bank Road. I hate to see the other one lose its historic purpose. And the fact that that architectural gem is being held up hostage, in a sense, and the library itself, to this crazy proposal that keeps trying to resurface here after year in an area that is known to contain not just a few graves, but many graves. You're not going to be able to build there.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
And if there, if there are people here who arrived a bit late, and you still would like to speak, there is a sign-up sheet here in the front, so we'll let Nathaniel speak, who's the last person on our list. And, and then certainly anybody else who would like to have an opportunity to speak as well, to come up and sign in and go forth.
Nathaniel Hussey, 114 Burke Street, Greenfield, Massachusetts. Thank you, Planning Board members and Economic Development Committee members. I'm a graduate student. I'm actually going to turn this microphone, because you all, I believe, have the document that I... that I sent out. I'm a graduate student at Antioch University and one of my projects, you can find over here on the wall, it is actually an additional layer to the map you see before you. And what that is, is a suitability model for the potential of development within the proposed zone. So what you will find on that map are green and brown areas. The brown areas are areas of elevation of greater than 10 feet over a five square meter space. The green areas are also areas that are outside of a 50-foot buffer zone around any water feature and a 15-foot buffer zone outside of any right of way of any road. What you will also find on this map are parcel lines, which will be able to tell you which parcels have the potential for development. In the spirit of cooperation and transparency, I submitted this to the board and I offer my limited expertise and student ingenuity and energy to answering any questions that you have. My email address is on the poster there. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak that hasn't signed up? Come on up to the front and sign in, and when everyone has signed in, then I'll begin the next group of speakers.
I signed that.
Okay, you did sign.
I did.
Okay, are you next?
Sure. Caitlin McKenna, I live at 189 Chapman Street in Greenfield. I do just want to thank all of you for working hard and being here tonight and listening to us. I know we have a lot of different opinions. We feel pretty warm about our opinions, and I know that you are all working hard to make Greenfield the best that it can be. I also feel warm about my opinions, so I do support our library. I think it's a foundation stone. I think it creates literacy. I think it's there for our babies, our children, adults, and our elders. It's there for all of us. So I appreciate all of your efforts to make and optimize that resource for us. I am very concerned about the zoning change proposed. You know, I guess politics are politics. I think swaps like this are, I don't want swaps, it sounds so, I don't mean to disrespect the attempt at making this happen, but it feels like it takes away the time and thoughtfulness to put through an appropriate zoning situation that we can all only be proud of. I think the tightness for time to be able to create an agreement just makes it really hard, and I think it foments dissatisfaction. I don't believe that with my, all our resources, if we want more fast food restaurants, we have closed ones on Federal Street that should be occupied. They're empty buildings. I also agree that the nature of retail is changing and that really people, for the most part, are going out shopping. They get attracted to towns where they have craftspop and farmers markets and interesting vibrant businesses. I don't think the answer is minimum wage jobs where the profits go out of town for the vast majority of the money. But I also just recognize your hard work again, and I know no one's doing this with any evil intention, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Small, 44 James Street. I am a new resident at Franklin County and a new home health aide, and I have here about 20 pages of the evils of big box stores from one of my clients. And I would like to thank all of you for your hard work on behalf of Greenfield and, you know, working with elders day in and day out, physical barriers and what those physical barriers become obstacles to achieve kind of a heightened sense. And I would hate to see, I would hate to see Foster's close because behind Foster's is Allen Terrace, and elders can walk to not just a store, but a community where their great-grandchildren are clerks. And that means something. And this putting all of the shopping outside of a walkable street grid, a walkable town. I have deep reservations and I would also really like to see a completely wheelchair accessible library because I also have about 30 pounds of romance books in my car, which I do not read, but one of my ladies goes through them, and I don't know what I'm going to do if there isn't a library with a big area for swapping them. So that's my piece.
Thank you very much. Caitlin? Oh, that's Caitlin. Alyssa Small?
Yep, that was me.
Thomas Mark? Following Thomas is Douglas Slaywhite. Slaywhite?
I'll just crouch a little bit. Thank you for holding this and allowing us all to speak. I'm a recent resident of Greenfield. My wife and I moved here a little over a year ago. We're on Sanderson Street. Part of the reason we settled in that neighborhood is we wanted to live in a town where we could walk to a park, we could walk to the library, where we had access to a downtown. We did not move here because we wanted convenient access to cheaply made Chinese products. We did not move here because we wanted to frequent stores that gave people minimum wage labor and part-time hours and no health benefits. When we want to shop local, we save and we shop local. I spend more money at Wilson's because somebody who lives in Greenfield is working here and the business is here. I don't spend money at Walmart. I didn't move to Greenfield because I hoped that someday there would be a Walmart. I moved here because I saw the way that downtown was growing. I saw an investment in public transportation. I saw things that made me believe that the downtown and businesses, they were valued. I think to characterize a town as a retail desert is false. I know four grocery stores off the top of my head. I think that if your priority is to conveniently get cheap products, then your priorities are very different than mine. And I hope that the priorities of the board and the priorities of most people at Greenfield are to live in a place that values local businesses, values their library, values relationships, living in a place where you can walk somewhere and support your neighbors and see your friends. I don't think that this does anything to accomplish that. I do think that a new library would. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Douglas?
Hi, my name is Douglas Scott White. I live at 237 Conway Street in Greenfield. Thank you very much for holding this open meeting. As a longtime educator, starting from preschool and kindergarten through sixth grade, and elementary school, middle school, junior high school, high school, and even teaching some at Indiana University when I was getting my master's degrees. As a longtime educator, I'm very much in favor of a new library. My concerns, though, are that I think the library stands on its value by itself and that we don't need this very questionable development. And I'm wondering how much it might hurt a lot of the retail stores on Main Street, many of which in the last 10 years have gone out of business. So that's a major concern of mine. The other concern is it would have been, I think it would have been helpful to all of us that are really in favor of seeing a new library come to be, that, you know, someone like Eric Turock, who's responsible for economic development and planning, it would have been helpful to have been able to see some kind of master plan and how, what buildings are unoccupied and available and what open spaces were available so that we could take a look at the whole picture of how a new library, which is going to necessitate a new fire station, would fit into the entire master plan for Greenfield. And I still think there is time and hope to do that, and it's important for people in understanding the impact of everything that we might like to do. Personally, I'm not crazy about any kind of big box coming here or urban sprawl. Okay, so if you don't think urban sprawl or retail sprawl is a problem, just take a look at, just travel from Northampton to Amherst on Route 9 and you'll understand. Okay, so, thank you.
And given that we have time, I'm sure that any of you can go, you know, call the planning department and go in and find a copy of the master plan. I don't know if the library, the library also has a copy of the master plan, so you certainly can find one. Emma Morgan?
I did plan some off the cuff too. I live at, my name is Emma Morgan. I live at 50 Solar Way. And it's hard to talk about this because I love a lot of people who disagree with me on it, and some people who I love are for this zoning ordinance change. And I even love someone who helped make the proposal, and yet I don't think these are good zoning changes. I absolutely believe that Greenfield needs a state-of-the-art library like yesterday. There's no question a library lifts all boats. There's no question that libraries raise the tax base. State-of-the-art libraries do. The research is abundant, so I don't have to go into that. There's no evidence that tax base goes up because of really any kind of retail, but certainly not box stores, certainly not gas stations and fast food joints. We have so many of those. I live in Greenfield. I am low income and I don't eat at those places. I don't eat that for a lot of reasons. My body doesn't relate to it, but also, you know, I don't, I make my food at home. That's how I live, is low income. And I've heard that this area of the French King Highway is not beautiful, but I think it's very beautiful, actually. It's not the Beer's Ears National Monument. We don't have that here. We have, we have. And we also have the oldest food co-op in all of western Massachusetts, which is struggling along with the rest of our downtown. That's a real anchor business and supports many other food co-ops that Greenfield has that are worker-owned. I understand people think one will bring the other, but I don't know if that's true. I only know that I don't think this is a good idea.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Ed Berlin, 20 Orchard Street in Greenfield, and I'm here in support of this compromise. I would just say that for the last 30 years in Greenfield, there have been a portion of our community that has really wanted to see development out on the French King Highway and have felt as though they have been deprived of that opportunity. And for over 30 years in this town, there's been a group of people in this who wanted a new library, who have felt deprived of this opportunity. And we are now at a stage where you all, and then the council next week, hopefully will have an opportunity to allow both groups to get something that they've wanted for so long. And I know that this is a compromise, and in an ideal setting, this wouldn't be the way to consider zoning changes, but the bottom line is this. We have been working for over six years to get us this library, and we will not get it because we do not have the votes unless we go forward with this grand compromise. And I would ask you, on behalf of the library people, on behalf of people who want more development, and on behalf of the vast majority of people in this town who want to see compromise, that you support this proposal or at the very least vote on it so that the council will have an opportunity to make a decision for all of Greenfield next week. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just take your name, please.
My name is Jasper Lapinski. I am currently at 120 Pulpit Hill Road in Amherst, but within the next few months, I'll be moving to Washington Street. I'm not going to take a position on the compromise, but I want to say that a couple people had their facts wrong. First of all, Douglas, it's pronounced Amherst. But more importantly, it isn't true that big box stores are cheaper, and I just want to give you two examples. Until I recently upgraded my printer, I was using HP ink cartridges and a lot of them, and I found out that Baker Office Supply sells them for $4 less than Target. They didn't know that, but I did. But the people who want it cheap may still go to Target. And a second example, I used to work at Home Depot in Greenfield, and they sell stools for construction that are metal and have two legs, but they're wider than a regular stool, for $150, and Kohl's Lumber in Amherst sells the same one for $50. So it may be true that local stores will go out of business if we build larger ones, and it also may be true that that's what people want, and I'm not going to take a position at this moment, but it isn't true that it will save people money, at least not all or even most of the time.
Thank you. We still don't have time. If anybody else would like to take advantage of a chance to speak?
Hi, I'm Sarah LaRque. I live at 85 Sanderson Street. I hate public speaking, so I wasn't going to talk, but my husband spoke earlier. Six-month-old, six-month-old in the back. He's moved here and I'm really excited to raise a family here, and one thing that's really important to me is library. But I worry that if we had big box stores, we won't have the community around that is so important to me to live in Greenfield. I worry that, I know the library has strong community and strong supporters, and I'm really hoping that we have a new library, but I worry if we get big box stores, that we will just turn to a place that doesn't attract families. And so I have a great library, but losing the heart of downtown and losing all of our local businesses, I really want to invest local, invest in what we have here. I don't want to be just another city in Massachusetts that has a Target and Trader Chose and that people just think of coming to get their necessities. I want to be a destination where people come and hang out and where community is vibrant and that we also have a great library. But I think that having great people that want to support a library is more important than selling our heart and our community just in order to get a building. Because I think our city is about who we are, and I hope that who we are are people who support local and want to see our city grow and with families and people who are interested in supporting each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? And perhaps if you did not sign in and I just took your name afterwards, if you would come up and actually print your name and address on this list, that would be helpful.
Hi, I'm Laura Towns. I live at 69 Franklin Street. And like some of the previous speakers tonight, my husband and I chose Greenfield and chose to live where we live, really near the and chose to live where we live, really near the downtown because of the downtown. We have two children, ages nine and 14. We have been a walking family with the exception of the driving I do for work, which is pretty much all the time. I am really excited about the opportunity to have a new library. I think it's long overdue. I'm also actually pretty excited about the opportunity to see some development at the north end of town and just to have the option perhaps of having some of the kinds of retail that is not currently available in Greenfield. My work has me in the Amherst and Hadley area every single day. So I do a lot of my shopping down there because I can't do it in Greenfield. I also use the downtown and I will continue to use the downtown. It will not make a difference to me except for when I need to buy something that I can't currently buy in Greenfield. I think this is a wonderful solution. I think, as Ed said earlier, it's an opportunity to give both parties, if you will, or both the, the things that, that two different kinds of people want. And I'm not even, I don't even want to suggest that it's kinds of people, but I feel like we're answering, we're solving two problems with one, one, one move. And I think that that's an important thing to recognize. I'm not interested in legislating what people should or shouldn't buy. I am interested in continuing to support our downtown and I'm interested in seeing our library come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm mostly speaking my friends on the planning board, my colleagues on the council. I'll have an opportunity to speak to you at the full council. I've sat in the seats where you are and I'm sympathetic to the decision you have to make. I've heard some comments tonight about this is not the right way for the planning process to take place. In reality, the French King proposal at least was proposed two years ago and there was talk, okay, well, let's do a process. There hasn't been a process in that time. The conversations about development in Greenfield have been going on for about 30 years. I'd like to suggest to you that many of the things I've heard tonight about having a vibrant and strong downtown that supports local goods and good jobs and a local economy that's vibrant and having large scale retail development are not mutually exclusive. We don't have to have one or the other. We can't have both. North Hampton, Keene, other communities have both large retail sectors on the outskirts of town and have vibrant downtown quarters. Our master plan specifically calls for a diversity of shopping opportunity in Greenfield. Diverse, not just one kind, but many things. I would suggest to you that that opportunity already exists today in Greenfield. Just like most people have a library in their cell phone, they also have shopping opportunities in their cell phone. And that we have thousands of people who shop at large scale retail every day throughout our community. And many of the things that we have tried to do to mitigate some of the results of that national economic trend, they're here already through amazon.com, walmart.com. And instead of having the jobs, admittedly minimum wage jobs, I'll be very quick and wrap up, minimum wage jobs, the tax revenue from the bell buildings, we have tens of thousands of UPS, FedEx and, and US Postal Service trips every day throughout every neighborhood in Greenfield, increasing our carbon footprint. So for environmental reasons as well, I would ask you to strongly consider following your master plan and adopting this change. Thank you.
Is it, can you also state your name and address for the record?
I, I apologize. Isaac Mas, 248 Green River Road. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vern, could you state your name and address as well?
Vern Sun, 81 Byron Road, Greenfield. I'd like to see Greenfield Main Street like it was, let's see, 65 years ago. When I could go downtown and get anything possible. I'd also like to see a tax base go down. Now, um, this outskirts would be good if we could, you know, the places where we build would be available to build. That everything would be laid out so we could actually know that we could put this place here and this place there. Now, I haven't made up my mind how to vote or not. I'm just stating the fact that I'd like to see Greenfield downtown grow like it was back when I was running back and forth from Lydon Road to Main Street. And I appreciate everything everybody does and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Please state your name.
Nancy Conant, 22 Walnut Street, Greenfield. The thoughts that have been floating through my brain are, I look at the, don't take this as an ageist statement, but I'm looking from one end to the other. And I'm looking to the future and I'm thinking, who's the future? Well, the future is those folks that are in the age 30 bracket and forward. I sat one day with my family and interviewed them on the library and a few other issues. And they were just like, what are you wasting money on a library for? And I said, well, there's valid reasons and, you know, I've supported to a degree. I'm not sure how you get the information from that next generation. There really will be Greenfield, not myself, not many of yourselves. It's really, we're looking at investing in the future. So I guess my investment would be historically having jobs for people so they can make a living. To offer up a center that is walkable for many and/or accessible for via a bus or a car if needed. We've got a parking garage. I feel as though we're losing some direction here because we're being pulled to make a decision on something that I'm not sure is really going to be a great benefit to our tax base, but I don't know at all, that's for sure. It's just what I'm, you know, kind of surmising based on listening to. The library, wonderful place, but I'm not sure we need a brand new one. I think you could add on to it. I hate to lose the historical building that's there, although there's parts of me that would love a new library. I love a lot of things. I don't want to see the schools shortchanged. I'm an educator in the past and it always concerns me as our tax dollars, you know, are like, here's the pie. So much goes this way. So I guess, I know your job is hard. Best of luck. Please ask some young people, you know, what are their thoughts here? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Fern Smith, 24 Vernon Street. I was not going to talk, not prepared at all. But I graduated with Isaac and he and I always disagree pretty much on everything except for one topic. Where are you? Okay. Our first votes were against Walmart, for Walmart. I worked at Rich's, he worked at Ains'. We've always been opposite. But I agree at this point that we should move forward with the change in the overlay. It's time. I went shopping at Target the other day. I shop at Target. I work downtown. I shop downtown. I eat downtown. But it's important to have choices, you know? When Magpie moved in, Village was worried they were going to close because there was another pizza place. They're both thriving. They're bringing people into downtown. You need to look at the big picture. We're not getting a huge big box. It's not happening. But we can bring people in to town and bring, sorry, not my forte. And bring people into town to spend money. So they come in one side, but they can leave the other side. We need to look at the big picture and work together. Obviously, I'm for the library, been for the library, also agree on this, so please support it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Sturzema. I live at 27 Abbott Street. And I was not going to talk either. I love the library, but I also feel, have been feeling very disturbed about this process and the artificial way in which these two very different things are being forced together. People have been talking about the bigger picture, but if there's a lack of integrity in the process, then there is no bigger picture. If you just talk about retail versus, um, if you just talk about retail, for example, that's going to change. But if there's no integrity to your process in making decisions about zoning, then, then you're really disturbing, you're disrupting, you're breaking the very fabric on which you make decisions. So I'm, I do not believe this is the way to do it. And I, despite the fact that I love libraries and I would love to see a new one, I don't think this is the way to do it. I think you're bypassing the difficult decision that each has their own process. A new library has a process and whatever zoning change you want to make has a process. And you're bypassing each of those by cramming these two things together in an artificial and flimsy way in a reduced period of time when people don't have, have the chance to truly absorb what you're asking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
My name is JJ White. Many of you know me as Joe White, but hey, sometimes things change, including your name. I am far from being an expert on development and zoning issues. But I've lived in Greenfield, give or take 10 years or so, since 1985. I live at 708 Coal Rain Road now. For 20 years I lived on Orchard Street, which was right off of High Street. And it was just a fantastic experience. And I remember the, the debates around the, the first Walmart debate and then the Home Depot was going to come in. And, you know, to be honest with you, these issues haven't been my highest priority. So I don't speak with any knowledge here regarding that. But my experience of going to Home Depot here in Greenfield, and I'm, I go there often, and then going to a Home Depot or a Walmart in Hadley, I think the first time I was so stunned at the difference in size. And today during discussions about this meeting and the plan, I spoke to somebody who has been a very prominent elected official formerly in, in Greenfield. And he told me, which I think probably is true, it's a fait accompli because there's a lawsuit that has a 134,000 square foot development project coming in and it's in litigation or something at this point. And so he said, well, just to give you my comparison, it's Stop and Shop is 67,000 square feet. That's like twice the size. So my time's up, but I wanted to just say that's an enormous project and maybe it's not right for Greenfield. Thanks.
Welcome. This is one of our newer members of the town.
Hi, Celine Mater, 105 Hastings Street, Kestrel. And we were at the library this morning. As an educator, as a parent, the library is something that is exciting to me. It's something that we utilize, something that I think will be a big part of his life, be it a renovated library or a brand new one. That being said, I am sincerely troubled by the conflation of these two issues. I agree strongly that it's not the way to go about making a decision. And I think that to me it feels like, more like coercion than compromise. And I think it's really important to distinguish between those two, those two terms. The yes vote for, for the library feels like a trench in horse in this situation where there's a no vote that's in the belly. It's not a no vote, but there's a, you know, vote for the, the changes in zoning that's in the belly of this yes vote, which looks bright and exciting for those of us who do support the library. And I, I'm excited about development and thinking about what, how we create a sense of place in Greenfield. As a homeowner here, very, very invested. I'm excited about those conversations and anticipating them, but I don't think that this kind of fast track manner of, of putting issues together in an expedient way is really what's going to bring us the most sort of conscientious, thoughtful, democratic option, which I think we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. That's fine. Can you state your name?
Jack, Jack Anderson, 729 Chlorine. And I wasn't obviously going to speak either, but this isn't fast track. This is the time to make this decision. And I've lived in Greenfield for four years. I just moved back four years ago and I love it here. I work in town. This is the time for the library and to put this compromise now. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Todd out of 12 Walnut Street. I wasn't trying to talk. I don't even know why I'm up here, but I just have to say something. I was really excited about getting a library. I think it's time. I think this time we'll never get that possibility again if we don't get this library. I mean, there's a lot of money coming in. It's a lot of money to raise. So I am 100% for the library and it's a hard decision. I remember when my kids were young, they were going to federal school. I was working after school. They walked to the library. They could do their, their homework there. They were safe. However, if I have to go along with this compromise to get the library, then I say, let's do it. Because we cannot let this opportunity go by. The other thing, I was just appalled when I read the paper that none of our elementary schools have libraries without a librarian. That's very sad. The high school has a wonderful library, a wonderful library. But our kids need a good library, especially if you're low income. Because a lot of people want parent families. They might not have a computer. Their kids come home, where are they going to go? Maybe, maybe a family can't afford aftercare. They can go to a library where they can have, stay there for their homework. That's just one aspect. This did a research that I just read that more people are reading books than they're, than they're using the computer to get audio books and other books. So there's really still a need for real hardback, softback books in a place. There's magazines. There's, you know, the library has everything like that, like magazines and whatever. So I really, really think if we let this library go, it's a shame on Greenfield. If we have to do this compromise, which I'm not pleased about, then let's do it. I was hoping that we could have longer time for this and vote on it in November. Get the library, talk about this, vote on it in November. But that's just my opinion. It's a hard decision.
Thank you. Uh, everyone who wanted to speak has had a chance? Everyone who wanted to speak has had a chance.
Do we need to keep the public hearing open until nine? Or we do not? Okay. So this is really the last chance. Yes, I think we can give you the time to...
So my original conversation never got to come to completion. But this is a very complicated process. It's going to take a long time. And it's completely disconnected from the library conversation. I know for a fact that you're going to have an awful lot of work to do on any form of rezoning the French King Highway. But it feels to me like cramming these two things together in order to hold the library conversation hostage. In a lot of ways, it's a non-democratic process. I don't care what the hell happens in Washington, D.C. This is where democracy started, here in New England. And the way I see it is there are a handful of councillors who believe that they are informed by their constituents to hold the library hostage. I don't think that's a fact. I do not believe that the constituents of Greenfield really believe that. I think that the library vote should be separate and independent of this and that good thoughtful process should go into rezoning. And that's just my conversation. Thank you very much, I appreciate all that you do.
Again, I do think it's courageous trying to work this out somehow. And at the same time, no one's mentioning major development review. I meant to mention that before it got cut off, which is another thing that's being voted on tonight, the relaxing of major development review. And that's not just for the French King overlay, that's for all of Greenfield. So I have a lot of concern, equal concern about that. I think it's very hard to take away something that's a carrot once it's there because you take away a carrot and then it looks like a stick. But I don't think it is one. And like I said, I don't know if it would cost the library, I don't know. I only know what I know in my heart. You know, I don't know what's going to happen politically. I just know the library raises the tax base and will ultimately lower my taxes in the long run. I don't think that fast food chains will do that. I know they won't. There's no evidence and there's all evidence the contrary. And lastly, even I, who live in Greenfield, avoid that light on Federal Street. And most people I love will live on Federal Street. And I drive in circles to get to Federal Street, to their houses or to things that I'm going to on Federal Street, like the tire warehouse, a local business. However, you know, I don't think we do another Federal Street or more, a race to the bottom. I see that kind of retail as a race to the bottom. And a library as a big float.
Okay, thank you. I gave two people time to follow up. I would not want to not let someone. But I'm hoping everybody has felt well heard and we've appreciated hearing your voices.
Good evening, President of the Council, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council, Member of the Board. Thank you very much for putting this together. I am really an advocate for the library. I'm not going to repeat what... First of all, my name is Sammy, Sammy Rahab, 15 Abbott Street. I've been living in this wonderful town of Greenfield since 2011. I just love it and I love the community and its spirit. And regarding the library, no question about it. The library is like many people in many meetings, it's a foundation for this town. We need to go ahead and do this. And thank you for your support, Mr. Mayor and many other people doing this. Regarding this process by which we are kind of making like a trade-off, it seems like there is like a poison pill that we need to swallow to actually get to the library. I'm not a lawyer by any means, but is or could the decision by the council, by you guys, if you make, you go ahead with this compromise, would that decision be legal in the Commonwealth? Given that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has offered to give money and grant a substantial grant for this? I mean, what would stop, I mean, a group of citizens actually suing the city? Given that you have actually created an obstacle for the citizens to enjoy the benefit of a new library? So I request that you be a little bit cautious on this and see, Council at least, about whether there are future liabilities for the council and the city. So the retail development as such, really, first of all...
We'll have to stop and see.
Oh, okay, so, you know, I question basically whether the retail is going to create a lot of jobs. The real problem is that we have closer than ever homes that are empty here and living wage of $2 or $15 an hour are not going to actually make it. We need manufacturing jobs. So please limit the development to manufacturing jobs if you have to do a compromise. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll see no other parties to speak. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:16 P.M. Thank you to everybody who showed up and voiced your concerns. Okay, so for this is for my committee. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? All those opposed, abstentions? See you then, wish you a best.
And for the planning board, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Charles seconded, Jamie made the motion, Charles seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is officially closed. I just would like to make one more announcement. I made it in the beginning that because of a glitch that was discovered yesterday afternoon, the planning board cannot deliberate tonight. But we will be deliberating Monday evening at 7 o'clock at the John Zahn Center. And of course, we welcome anyone to come to hear that deliberation. And also, I would like to also mention that once the public hearing has been closed, we cannot accept any more public input. But we are very grateful for all of the public input that we have gotten about this issue.
Thank you very much. And we're going to take a brief intermission here to allow our friends of the planning board to assess if they so wish and to stretch our legs before we deliberate. Thank you. Hello, everybody, welcome. I'm calling the meeting back to order at 7:35. All right, great. All right, so once again, we are discussing, so we just had our public hearing and now I'd like to open for discussion. Councilor Dullin, please read. Okay, Councilor Dullin, please read our first motion on page four.
Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the code of the City of Greenfield zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 4.16, corridor overlay district as follows. Striking A1 in its entirety and replacing with: One, French King Highway, High Street corridor overlay district shall apply to the following roadway corridors: One, land extending from the intersection of Clark Street and High Street along High Street south to Smith Street; and Two, the land east of the French King Highway and north of Canada Hill Road to the junction of French King Highway and Route 2. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code; and further that nonsubscript changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the number format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion. All those in, okay, we'll take a vote, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Councilor Dullin, page five.
Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the code of the City of Greenfield zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 7.12, Major Milner, US follows. In Section B1, replacing 1,000 with 3,000 and replacing 500 with 1,500. And in Section B4, replacing 100,000 with 150,000 and 15,000 with 35,000 and 40,000 with 75,000. And deleting Section B5 in its entirety. And in Section C, striking 1 and 2 in their entirety and replacing with: One, the SPGA shall be the zoning board of appeals. And in Section E, striking adversely impact and replace with: Create material adverse impact on. And in Section F, adding prior to the words upon review of the project the following language: Notwithstanding the provisions of MGL C.40A, all decisions of the SPGAs shall be made within 210 days from the initial date of application. The failure to issue a decision within 210 days shall result in the granting of a special permit as presented, and constructive grants shall be issued in accordance with the provisions of MGL 40A. The provisions of this regulation shall be severable. Should any section or provision of this regulation be held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, this shall not affect validity or enforceability of any other section or provision of the regulation. And this regulation, exclusive of the invalid or unenforceable section of provision, shall to the full extent consistent with law remain in full force and effect. And further, amend the table of contents and index of the code; and further that nonsubscript changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it follow the number format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion. See you then, I'm going to say something. Okay. So I think we have to take a step back and remember that what we're putting forth, especially for this motion about the major development review, isn't just the overlay district. So we're essentially removing the right to review major development at, I guess, in some cases, more than almost double than what they stand at today. And I think the major development review is seen as this evil thing. And really what the MDR is in place is so that we have a dialogue. We have what we have here today, maybe not at such a large scale, but we're able to pause, check, where's Greenfield at? What's our vision for ourselves for today and tomorrow? But also for 50, 100 years in the future. I don't think, I don't think we're being, I think we're being a little quick to say, here's the increase in the MDR and it's not just about this parcel of land. So if we're talking about a compromise, are we giving away more for this compromise than what we're bargaining for? And so I just, I can't support relinquishing our MDR without a little bit more research on it from the back end in a highway of traffic study or something in terms of what that would actually do to our community if we... It's not about what comes in, it's about having the right to look at it, take a pause and actually see how it fits into our community. Councilor Dullin?
I think I would just like to clarify. I am not in favor of these zoning amendments for their merits. I'm willing to support them in the spirit of compromise because I believe that the library is that important to the town of Greenfield. So that's just the logic behind why I'm supporting these particular things. I take Councilor Snapples' concerns about the MDR very seriously.
Vice President, Rick.
I have lots to say and most of it, I think, I will do at full counsel. But I do want to say that I do support the zoning. And it's not just for the library. Because let me just speak in the minority in every way possible, actually. So if I wanted to discuss people who have come to me about the library and the cost and what it's going to do with the tax base, I've heard more people talk to me about the library than about the zoning. In fact, they think it's about time when it comes to the zoning. What happened is when we built the senior center? If people remember correctly, when we got emails, people brought up, you're doing a senior center. But what about when we voted? We have voted numerous times for more development around the French King area. And we did, we voted once and it passed overwhelmingly. We voted again, it passed overwhelmingly. We did one more time and lost by nine votes. We changed that to commercial, overwhelmingly, again overwhelmingly, and now it's in court. So as I heard people speak tonight, I was just kind of saddened by all the confusion. There was so much about a Big Bucks store. And this is more about the overlay. The Big Bucks store piece is in court. This has nothing to do with what council and nor the planning board is going to discuss and vote on tonight and on Monday. So hopefully that's coming because it's what the people wanted. And people spoke about Athol. I grew up in one of, my father now lives in Athol and I do see the changes there. I did see the new Marvel movie come out and people checked in in Hadley and check in in Athol. And it just hurt my heart so much because of the Garden Theater. But time and time and time again, we can't keep asking people to stay and just commit their every dollar here when places did come in and we forced them to be the smallest Home Depot you could ever build and the smallest Walgreens you could ever build. And don't build that auto vehicle center because of all the traffic and all the pollution. And now we have no problem. And don't let CBS go 24 hours. What's that going to do to the neighborhood? And our crime is going to go up so much and nothing happened. We have been feared from so much. We wouldn't have BJ's have a gas station. And that went up for a vote as well. But there was so much misinformation that went out that made it go that route. To this day, I still miss that vote for the office park. I really felt like Greenfield did a big disservice when we did not try to make that pass. So time and time again, we have worried so much about our town. And I love our downtown and nothing's going to change about that. There are people who will always shop there and they'll always be committed. But everyone owns their own wallet. We cannot tell anyone how to shop or how to be. Councilman asked me to go to... Councilman Massey made a good point when he talked about FedEx and UPS in and out of town all the time. No matter what we do, that's still going to continue. I am also struck that everyone is so terrified of fast food and gas stations as if Greenfield has such a good name that we think people are gonna be flocking to Greenfield if they hear this passes. Listen, we still have a zoning board, a conservation board, a planning board. There's still so many loops people have to jump. I don't see people in their right mind going, let's do this. It might cost us a couple lawsuits, but let's put in the time. I am sort of glad that people think that Greenfield's gonna be that desirable to all these places, that everyone's gonna be flooding us. I don't see that at all. I wish it wasn't that way. And the other simple fact that I hate to say, there's none left votes for the library. And I know people think that this is hostage-taking. It doesn't even have to be hostage-taking, you know? I don't feel like the library's gonna pass or the zoning. And that is, that is hard. It's hard to swallow, it's hard to live with, it really hurts me. So when people compromise and it's the two unlikely suspects, you know, it felt really good. At the same time, reading online how much they got beat up verbally over a compromise, that's equally sad. I can't believe my whole theme is how sad I am about everything that's going on. Only because people came forward with the same complaints that we have heard for like the last 30 years about what's gonna happen if, if, if. We just never take the time to get out of our own way. I really do trust our boards. I feel like I can support the zoning and know that we are gonna double and triple check them. And Lord knows, if somebody really doesn't want someone here, there's gonna be protests, there's gonna be petitions. People are gonna be battering these people. And I've watched it over the years when developers have come forward and listened to residents badmouth them to their face over and over and over again. That's who we are on some level, and it's really sad. So I just hope for once that we just get out of our own way, we take a chance, we see what happens, and by March 25th, I believe, we'll see what the court decides. You know, is there that glimmer of hope, you know, what's gonna happen, who could possibly come? I feel like lifting this overlay is whatever may come to that French King means they could have food inside that, that shop and center or whatever comes forward. The other thing that was lots of misinformation was everyone who was worried about the grocery stores. As it is, the French King, the way that we have left it, if I'm correct, was there could not be food in that new complex, whatever it was going to be. So there's nothing that can happen there that's gonna hurt Foster's or Big Y or anyone else. But let me add, that stock and shop was allowed to speak at many planning board meetings. And they talked and talked and talked about how they didn't want a big box store to be in our town. And shortly after that final vote, they put in self-service cash registers. And they talked to us about what we should do in our town, and then that's what they did. I won't even talk about the robot because I don't really care because I don't shop there. And now they are wondering how much they're gonna do with the unions that they have in place in Big Y, closed in Pittsfield without very much warning.
Councilor Brunna, open for somebody else to speak. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor, is it Björnsson or Burson?
Burson.
Burson, Councilor Burson.
So I look at this. I look at this business that we're in right now as a settlement. And so when you settle a dispute or you settle a case, you assess the risks to either side. And when I look at, I look at the library, these are the pluses that are, that I take into consideration. One of them is that there will be, if this settlement is agreed to, a $20 million asset in the community of which $10 million more or less is being paid by the state. So we're ostensibly getting the bargain of a $20 million asset for $10 million. And there are so many people in this community who are supporting it, not just with their signs and their voice, but with their money. In a very, very short period of time, the foundation has raised in excess of $600,000 to $700,000. That's a very, very good showing. On the other side, we have a process that isn't perfect, but it's possible. And because it's, because it's possible, I weigh that against the risk of losing a $20 million asset. I also look at the risk of what not having a first-planned library will mean to the children of Greenfield, the adults of Greenfield, the high school students who will gather there, the after-school programs that'll be there. And I weigh that risk as a positive thing. Now, on the other hand, I may not be happy exactly the way the zoning works, and I share the chilly view that it'd be nice to have a look see of this through the, through the eyes of a process. But that's not part of this settlement, and I have to recognize it. What's the risk of changing the zoning? Well, we don't know exactly because we really don't have very much control over the economy that swirls around us. Will we get a, a big box store? Will we not get a big box store? Will somebody have to go to another town to buy a coffee maker? I don't have the same kind of empathy for somebody who has to shop to buy a coffee maker in town as I do for a child who will benefit from a program of enrichment and education in the library. So I'm trying to be a possibleist, if there is such a word, and to enable this community and the people who are making the decisions for you in a representative way to come to a reasonable settlement. A reasonable settlement means that nobody really likes it all that much, but they're just going to have to put up with it to go forward. So I support the settlement or compromise because the risks to the children and the risk to young people and the growth of the community and what we stand for. Because a library will tell the rest of the community, the rest of the world, people who come here, that we are in the knowledge economy, and we want to embrace the knowledge economy. Greenfield, many years ago, had an industrial heritage that was tremendous. And when I looked at the books in the Greenfield room in the public library and I looked at what was being taught in middle school and in high school, there was a tremendous amount of math revolving around calibration and tools at the time. And when I look at the math program in this high school, I see calculus, but I don't see coding. So I'm worried about that. So I hope the library will be, you know, a great symbol, not for, for a knowledge future for Greenfield. But that's why I'm supporting it. Those are my reasons. Understanding that it's not perfect.
Thank you. Any other discussion? President Bruno.
Thank you too, Semple. Maybe you've all heard a lot from me, but I just wanted to add to the discussion. I'm not a voting member of this body up here. But first I want to address, I've tried not to address it because I think sometimes when you address, when you, when you re-say things that you don't believe to be true, when you re-say them and say them again in an effort to defend yourself, you're only, you're only, you know, pushing that other message out there. But I have to say, but then at a certain point, you just get swift voted and you have to address it straight on. So this is not a hostage situation. These, a hostage situation is when two things are unrelated. These are very much related. If the more conservative folks in the town council were saying, well, we'll vote for your sanctuary city if you lower the smoking age. Those are two things both sides badly wanted. That would be a hostage situation. This is saying the people that are constituents that we hear from the most are concerned about the library because they don't wanna see their taxes increased. That's not a concern that the constituents who I talk to have. And we all live in echo chambers, and we tend to talk to the people who hold our same values. So usually the folks who are concerned about the taxes, I'm not the first person they reach out to because I'm kinda seen as a tax-and-spend liberal, and I don't consider that a bad thing. But this proposal gives us an, gives us an opportunity to increase the tax base. In 15 years, we've seen 0.03% increase in commercial development in town. We are not doing something right. We are doing a lot of right when it comes to working on our infrastructure, when it comes to our master plan that was put together beautifully by so many citizens in town. Our John Zahn Center is wonderful, our high school is wonderful. We have a lot of forward-thinking people in town. And it's a beautiful town, but we're still not increasing our tax base. Maybe the marijuana business will do it, but we've yet to see that, and it's yet to open up the doors to recreational marijuana. But that's not gonna be the only thing that does it. So we've gotta give this a shot. They are, and like I said, they are very much related. Not only that, but this does coincide with what our master plan calls for. And that master plan calls for an anchor discount department store, like it or not. It says it again and again if you open the master plan. It also calls for a diverse array of retail options. Our downtown is turning more into a place where you go for excellent food, nightlife, art, and that's, that's wonderful, and we should increase on that. We should take away from that. And I think, you know, if we don't have money to build into our towns aging buildings and infrastructure, if we can't invest in these things, then everything is forgotten. So we've gotta do something to increase the tax base. So this isn't something, you know, one completely unrelated thing for another completely unrelated thing. These are very much related, or else I never would have agreed to it. So I'm very much in favor of this. I won't be voted tonight because this isn't my committee, but I'll be voting in town council for this. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Pyke, pressure Pyke, go on.
Back in 2017, this came to the council for this overlay, and we had a mix of people. We had, some say more for it, some say more or less for it. But we tried, we tried compromise at that point with council, and it failed. To me, right now, this doesn't feel very comfortable, whether it's a hostage situation or not hostage situation. It doesn't feel comfortable. However, I do feel that I would rather hear from all of my colleagues at a council for this vote. So right now, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say yes or no. I'd rather move this forward to the full council so that we can hear everybody as a whole.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
And I have to say that I agree with Councilor Pyke. I was really geeked out, nerding out, having the opportunity to, I guess, deliberate among our colleagues on the planning board just to get some diversity of opinion and thought. And so I'm really bummed that I'm missing that opportunity tonight. So I just wanted to say that, and I do feel as though more information will come before us after we hear the planning board deliberation and we are able to meet with our other colleagues on Wednesday. And I look forward to that. Yeah, any further discussion? See none, we'll take our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, same. Can we do a roll call, or we all aye except for me? If you're a yes, can you please raise your hand? If you're a yes, please raise your hand. Councilor Dillon, page six.
Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the code of the City of Greenfield zoning map incorporated into the Greenfield zoning ordinance by Section 200-3.2, changing the underlying district of the corridor overlay district defined in Section 200-4.16A of this ordinance from general commercial to general industry, and further amend the table of contents and index of the code; and further that nonsubsequent changes to numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it follow the number and format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Motion's been made, second in, discussion. I assumed there'd be none. So I set this forward, and I understand it's been called a, I believe it was called a poison pill. And that wasn't the intention. The intention was to put forward a third option so that we can look at our options together as a whole. And that's why I'm super bummed out again that we weren't able to deliberate with our colleagues at the planning board because I think some really valuable conversation could have been had together tonight. My hope and my wish and my dream is that through this process, it ignites the will and the wish of the community to take a deep, hard look into the words written within the master plan as well as the property we do have available to develop, whether it's land or infrastructure. We have to do better, and I'm not yet convinced that the zoning put forth in this, I like the word settlement, so thank you, Councilor Burson. It does feel like a settlement. So I'm hoping that putting this forth, that perhaps the planning board will be willing to join me in discussion a little bit more clear, that maybe we can have a future conversation about at least making this zone mixed use. And by mixed use, also including the potential for housing. We have to be a little bit more creative because clearly, as President Bruno said, we've seen commercial grow by 0.03% in the last 15 years. Residential has declined by nearly 3%, and industrial, which Greenfield's back is built on, has decreased. And industrial, which Greenfield's back is built on, has decreased by 0.08%. And what's worse is that industrial sits on less than 3% of our total property here in town. And so we have to do better. And so this wasn't intended to jack up the deal or be a poison pill and kill it. It was intended to create the discourse of, let's reach into our past and see where Greenfield came from, what pieces of that past can we take with us in the future? And I don't mean 1965 what our downtown was. I'm just going to end on this one story. The other day, I went to Wilson's and I picked up this book, it's the Picture History Book of Greenfield. I don't know what it's called, I don't know who it's by, but I was reading it from cover to cover, just enthralled by the pictures in this book. And what I learned by reading this book was all of the structures that I assumed had been there forever were torn down, built up, torn down, built up, torn down, built up again. And so I think what we have to remember through this process is that A, yes, we are all neighbors and that B, Greenfield has survived time and time again. And I think the power of this little town, now a city, the fact that we were a town and now a city is just another testament that Greenfield's strength is reinventing ourselves, pivoting when we have to and hearing ourselves forward together. And so I don't think the counselors will vote to recommend this, but I do hope that this triggers a conversation and a hungry sense of inquiry from our citizens to urge us and push us and hold us accountable to keep this process going. With that being said, are we ready to take a vote or is there further discussion?
Absolutely. Counselor Dolan.
I think I just want to say, I really appreciate the spirit of this amendment. I'm well aware that big box commercial development in terms of the tax base is pretty much the worst land use that we can, that we can choose to allow. I think downtown retail is something like 80 times more lucrative to the town per square foot than big box. And industrial land is somewhere in the middle. And I think long-term, thinking about what types of development we really, what we really want the French King to look like and what we really want it to have is very important. I'm also aware that there's discussion about possibly changing some of the use tables in the existing zoning ordinance. So I'm hoping that that might be an opportunity to work with the planning board to move towards more mixed-use townwide, actually, not just in the French King, but opening up our zoning ordinance to allow different kinds of development. So I'm concerned about what this is going to do with the timeline for the library and if it's on the table, so I'm not going to be supporting it at the moment, but I do support the spirit.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? All as opposed? That's when you say no. And then abstentions. So if you say no, please raise your hand. One, two, three. Abstention. And I'm a yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. I just wanted to close and again, thank everybody for coming in tonight. I was very surprised, I was expecting to be here until midnight tonight. But that's because I'm so proud to serve Greenfield. I was like setting my alarm clock 4:30 in the morning on the way to Boston, can't wait to be up. But I will say that we had someone speak tonight about the future of Greenfield and young people in their 30s. And sometimes I forget sitting here that I'm 32 years old. And so I think our colleagues, old or young, the spirit of our board and of our community, I think we can say that we have some of the most passionate residents. When I, when I speak to my colleagues in councils and other communities, albeit Boston or West Springfield or North Hampton, we have a reputation for coming out. And so I want to thank you and let you know that it just empowers us to think in the direction of the future of Greenfield. And I hope that you'll join us on the 20th for the full discussion.
And I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 8:10 PM. Thank you and get to your seats.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.